Take action.
Take action.
Our legal representations recommendations. But we don't want.
Okay, so we're okay? It's just to put it.
And then it'll get approved again with those complaints from the accounts. Yeah, but we'll be paying it today.
Just when it's active.
So, and yeah, I think if there had been more, it was just, this is what Terry recommended.
It's, I mean, it's, it's okay.
Yeah.
The rules.
Okay. In the future, if we have it, we'll do executive for the first week and then.
Yeah, Tom's recommendation is.
Okay. Thank you.
I don't know what they do.
Just ask what to.
I'll stop.
Not today, I'm just going to grab. But next week.
Talk to him.
Or. Or the following week, because I won't, it'll be four weeks before I should be here yet.
Good morning.
Good morning.
All right. Good morning, everyone. It is nine a.m. I'm going to call this meeting of the Cottington County Board of Commissioners to order. It is Tuesday, November ninth, two thousand and twenty one. And Commissioner Johnson, would you lead us in the pledge today, please?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible, with every reason and justice for all.
All right, thank you. I would just mention that if you have a cell phone, if you could silence it, please, if you need to take coffee, could step out in the hallway, it'd much be appreciated. And also, we are streaming live on YouTube. Item number two, call for public comment. We will stay, still take comments from the public on items that are not on the agenda and the two numbers they can call are eight eight two six two four eight or eight eight two six two nine seven. And this is for information only, and we will handle those during or address those during the open part of our meeting. Item number three, conflict of interest items. Are there any on the agenda for fellow commissioners?
No, no.
All right. Item number four, approve the November ninth, two thousand and twenty one agenda, motion by Van Duzen, second by Gable. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose that motion carries. Action to approve the November, November second, two thousand and twenty one minutes of the Cottington County Board of Commissioners.
So moved.
Motion by Waterman, second by Johnson. Any additions or corrections? Hearing that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose that motion carries. Item number six, opening of the bids for the rip wrap on County Road twenty three four. You know what? I'm going to back up for a second. I, you can come up, up here, Lynn. Um, I meant to do this at the beginning of the meeting, and I'm sorry that kind of moved right on. Lynn is here today. Unfortunately, Rick Hartley's wife passed away, and I guess if we could just have a moment of silence for her. All right, thanks, everyone. Okay. So we will now do item number six, opening of bids for a rap on County Road twenty three dash four and action to award a bid. Cindy is opening those up. How many did we have?
Got two bids.
We have our bid tabs.
Right, the first one is Austin Construction LLC. There is a bond in place. Total bid amount is three hundred and eighty one thousand, four hundred and thirty dollars. Second bid is from Deutsch Excavating. Both of these firms are from Watertown. It's in place. Whole bid from Deutsch is four hundred and seventy four thousand dollars.
All right. With that, Lynn, would you like to have a little time to look them over and then we can come back at the end of the meeting and approve or are you, what's your thoughts?
Well, I guess if they got their bonds.
Yeah, maybe just compare the way they've broken it out to make sure they're similar. I mean, you can come back in a few minutes and.
Okay.
Okay, whenever, yeah, whenever you and I see you pop back and we can.
Okay.
Yeah.
I do. Yep, yep.
And then the board does want. Successful bidder to divide counties with certification stating that all materials meet specifications as opposed to being sub or transportation standards specifications. Talk about that afterwards. That was part of the motion on noticing advertising.
Okay, I'll go take a look at it.
All right.
Let us know when you're ready.
Yep. Whenever you're ready, just let us know. We'll put you right back on. All right, let's move on then to item number seven, Watertown Boys and Girls Club. Update on current year's numbers and successes. And we have a couple of individuals. If you would just state your name, please.
Good morning. I'm Liz Christensen, Executive Director at the Boys and Girls Club of Watertown. And I also have Brooke Reed Byrne, who is our diversion coordinator at the Boys and Girls Club.
Morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you for your past partnership. I just want to state that, you know, we have kind of launched this program back in the summer of two thousand and nineteen, and we have made great strides in really putting together a very successful county diversion program. And it's because of a lot of different people in the county that have played a big role in this, and we've been working together and collaborating, and we just have a couple of numbers that we'd like to kind of share as far as impact and how it's been working. So we do have a handout here.
Want to send one?
Okay, and this is just an outline of kind of some of our outcomes and numbers as far as the cases that we've been seeing, some of the financials on the backside of that. Okay. So just as a reminder, the, the JDAI program serves as youth members ten to eighteen years old. And again, just all the partnerships that we've seen, you know, come to fruition with this has, has made the program so successful. And all youth that would have, you know, gone through the juvenile justice system, you know, it would have been a lot different for them what that looked like and felt like for these youth members if, if we wouldn't have had a diversion program. So I'll let Brooke talk a little bit about some of the outcomes.
Sure. So I think I need to be closer. Um, so when looking at these numbers, it's important to note that these numbers aren't, the unsuccessful numbers aren't necessarily failures. Some of them I couldn't get a hold of. They moved out of town, so they had to be transferred to other counties, things like that. So all of these numbers, you know, the hundred and fifty seven cases that have been referred to me this year, and only a hundred of them starting, the, the fifty seven doesn't mean fifty seven failed. They could just not even be in court yet, or their charges got dropped, things like that. So, yeah, this year, a hundred and fifty seven cases have been referred to me as of July first of last year, well, of this year, I guess. And that compared to last year, we only had eighty four successful cases. And then if you look at the percentage increase, it's sixty one point eight six percent increase in cases. So that's great. I'm seeing a lot of cases, and you can see on this chart that these are the current cases in this fiscal year that I have seen. And obviously, you can see underage consumption is a very large portion of them. There have been some disorderly conducts, things like that, the devious licks we've seen at the school, those are counted. So we have been seeing some of that. The petitions went down from last year by forty four. If we compare it to the other counties where. We're a little bit higher than, than we would like, but, you know, that's just kind of the way it rolls, I guess. And just because they're petitioned in the court doesn't mean that they are necessarily going to stay in court. Sometimes Judge Means decides that she wants to divert it from the bench, and she does that quite often. So that is another good thing that we have going is that partnership with Judge Means. She does a lot for me in this program, so. Does anybody have any questions?
Just for the, oh, thanks. Just for the folks watching, can you define what a petition is?
Sure. It's basically a. Piece of paper that the court gives to kids that says, hey, you have to come to court.
Okay, so, so that doesn't, so once that's done, does that mean that no diversion happens that that's done, or is that?
No. So if they're petitioned in the court, that just means, hey, we want you to show up. And when they do show up, Judge Means and Tom make the decision whether or not they get to come to me. Typically, they will come to me before a petition is sent, but sometimes it is for whatever reason necessary for youth to be petitioned in the court.
Right. And can you, just so people have an idea what, so a diversion is to keep, you know, basically to keep somebody out of the, the justice system to give, give them another chance. And we know about, like teen court, other people probably heard about teen court, but, and they know the Boys and Girls Club is doing something. Can you give us some, a sample of some of the diversions that you're, you're doing?
Sure. So, right, yeah, so just typical diversion, like regular diversion and not teen court is pretty much the same as teen court without the teen court aspect. So we're doing most of the same things. They're still giving community service. They're still getting papers that they have to write. They're still getting the mental health support that they need. We just started having them fill out. An assessment that I send back to HSA, and they let me know, like, hey, I think that this would be beneficial for this kid. And then I send the kid to whatever program that they think would be necessary. So that is another really great partnership that I'm so appreciative for, because, you know, I'm obviously not a mental health professional, so it's nice to get that kind of input.
One success I do want to mention is, is you mentioned teen court, and that's the program traditionally that we've been familiar with the last fifteen years in the county, and, and you've been a partner with us on that. And we've really started to ramp that up again. You know, during COVID, it was a little bit hard to get, you know, volunteers together and have weekly or every other week meetings. Brooke has been doing that now with this group of kids. You know, they come together every other Monday, usually have an educational session or a class or a mock trial or a guest speaker. Again, so that's, that's youth who are more on the volunteer side, you know, when there's a court night or a case night, you know, they're serving as the volunteers to kind of put the defendants, you know, through kind of a jury process and whatnot. And, and Brooke has just really been doing a great job with, with engagement with those kids alongside of building relationships with the kids within the Boys and Girls Club, too. I think it's been very important this last year. She's been spending a lot of time with them and just, yeah, teaching healthy habits and, and what it's all about, you know, to be a healthy youth member. And hopefully, we won't see those kids, you know, in the, in the judicial, judicial system as well. So our engagement has really ramped up, I think, this last year with, with the teen court program. We're back at it.
And how did it just, okay, so the, the diversions or the cases referred in the comparison to other counties, is that the, the other county numbers, are those successive, successful divisions or are those referrals?
So the comparison is for the petitions.
Okay, all right.
Now, I, I guess I just want to say that this is a great report. That's exactly what I hope to see and, and I hope to see. For years to come. You know, we've seen a sixty, almost a sixty two percent increase in cases over the same time last year being referred. And I think that. You know, from a county perspective, we spend a lot of money in mental health, and we spend a lot of money in corrections. And, you know, I'd be curious just to know what, how much money that, you know, we have invested in this and what the savings would be long term, you know, and we won't know that for several years to come, you know, as they hit the adult corrections world. But, you know, this, this program is, is very valuable to us here in Cottington County, and I commend the work that you're doing on it. Keep up the good job because it's working, I think.
Yeah, it's, it's really been, Brooke is an important connector with the youth members to helping them, you know, working with the school system or, you know, the mental health side of things or alcohol substance abuse evaluations. You know, she's helping these kids take the next step and, and making them successful that they maybe wouldn't have if they weren't going through the diversion program. So again, it's kind of hard to measure those things, but we're seeing great impact with the tasks that she's taking to, to really help these kids so that they don't offend as, you know, future adults.
It's the county partnership along with the Boys and Girls Club and other community members that have a vested interest in the success of our youth and our community. And, and I think, I think it's working. I really do. So keep up the good work.
The hope is to get them on the right track young, and then that way.
Give them an alternative to something else.
Yep, and it's just a perfect fit with the Boys and Girls Club to be able to piggyback on our youth development services and then, you know, side by side operate this program as well. So it's a really good model. I think a lot of other, you know, counties in the state or across the country have been looking at that, you know, Boys and Girls Club partnership. It just works out really well.
Absolutely.
Just to build some anticipation for the next action item on the agenda, the, just so people can see that the, the state has a program through the UJS where they, I guess it's through the UJS, where they reimburse accounting for successful diversion. So this year, it's high since it's been, so we couldn't do it without the Boys and Girls Club. And we, the, in the next action item, we're going to put that back into basically this program. So it's kind of, it can help offset a lot of the, the cost of the program. So that's a significant amount. So it's twenty one thousand, two hundred and eighty two dollars if you're wondering. So, you know, that's kind of a, that's, that's a good thing.
Yes, thank you for that support and, and giving it back to the club so we can sustain our, our youth development programs that support the JDAI efforts.
Right.
I think you also have a lot of good community support. I mean, you can sense that anytime you have a fundraiser or something like that, everybody steps up. That's one of the fundraisers that I think is pretty easy to sell. And we'll be there to support you. Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else have any other comments or questions, or ladies have anything you want to add, or?
No, we would like to come back another time and, and even dig into just a little bit more Boys and Girls Club operations in general. You know, the county supports a lot of our other programs as well. So maybe at the end of the year or beginning of the new year, we can kind of dive into some other kinds of impact that the county has assisted us with.
Sounds good.
Yeah, thank you.
And I can also look into the cost savings for the county. I'll dig in and see if I can figure out what we saved so far.
Be curious to know what that is, if we, if we can just even do a rough estimation on what.
Because I know, like, Davidson County has done comparisons as to how many cases they're getting and how many cases they're taking off of the state attorney's office.
Right.
I can look into that and see how much savings.
Cost savings and benefit would be?
Yeah, you can, I guess you could. I mean, there's some of the immediate things. I think the, the big savings though is a little harder to quantify. It's the long-term stuff, you know.
Right.
You know, when a juvenile offender does not become an adult offender, I mean, that's the biggest.
Right.
And some of those things we won't know for years to come, but hopefully at some point we'll be able to. Get those numbers and see how that works.
What? It's worth it.
Okay, absolutely.
Thanks, Ken.
Thank you, guys. All right, so then that does segue into item number eight, action to approve allocate JJRI funds to the Watertown Boys and Girls Club.
I'll second that.
We have a motion in a second. Any other comments or questions? The amount, again, Lee, you said that earlier.
It's twenty one thousand, two hundred and eighty two dollars, correct?
Yep.
Twenty one thousand, two hundred and eighty two dollars and twenty four cents.
Okay.
Which comes, which is paid out at a rate of two hundred and twenty one dollars and sixty nine cents for each successful contributor.
All right.
Money well spent.
Yep. Any other comments or questions? Hearing that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose that motion carries. All right, thank you. Should we have Charles?
Lynn and I looked this over and there's, come on up, Lynn. And. It isn't written on the sheet. But Cindy, didn't you say something about to include what we added as an amendment for?
Well, the highway superintendent is to request that information.
Is to request.
Yeah, not necessarily to come in with.
It doesn't have to be on the sheet then.
No.
Okay, then the other question I, the other question that came up is Claussen and Sons LLC, no seal.
It could be a copy. I'm not sure.
And the other one had a seal on it, that's all.
What? The other one calls for a witness. On this one, it just calls for a witness. The other one, yep, they're just different forms, so.
Okay.
Yep.
They're notarized.
First one was Claussen and Sons Construction LLC out of Watertown and then Deutsch.
Are you happy with the bid?
We are happy with the bid. We, of course, we'd always like to see it come in less, but we're happy with the bid and we're happy with the timeframe that it's going to get accomplished on. And so I would make that a motion that we accept this bid from Claussen and Sons.
All right, we have a motion in a second. The amount's three hundred and eighty one thousand, four hundred and thirty dollars. Does anyone else have?
Yep.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose that motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just have Lori, you guys usually copy those for your files and bring the originals back to me whenever. All right, thank you.
Okay, I don't know. Becky, do we, do you have things like in court, but should we move and do number ten? You're good? Okay, all right, we'll do monthly reports then, and we'll start with the auditor. Cindy?
Okay, um, we have gotten our levies submitted to the Department of Revenue for approval. We're still waiting on that. I did send two employees to the election school that is held every other year, put on this by the Secretary of State's office. Two people from my office attended that. I will be presenting at the Towns and Township State Meeting on December first here in Watertown, just going over some things for the new clerks in those positions so that they know what I need from their annual meeting, like their oaths, appointment of officers, levy, all of that type paperwork. I'm just giving a presentation to them. We are watching budgets. That may need supplementing from before the end of the year. I've identified two that I am tracking right now. And part of it is based on the, the wage increase that was not budgeted for from September through December. Let's see, I also have been appointed to a newly formed local leadership council through the U.S. Election Assistance Commission. Two auditors from South Dakota were appointed to sit in on this group. It's a group of nationwide election officials that will meet virtually to discuss what we're doing in our, our counties, our cities to maintain election integrity and how we're doing things. So first meeting for that will be on December tenth. It's a virtual meeting.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Secretary of State approached two county auditors from South Dakota, and it was myself and the Davidson County Auditor. And, oh, I also have completed the High Performance Leadership through NACO, finished that up last Friday, so I got my diploma from that.
Congratulations again.
Been busy.
And that's what we're doing.
What's, what's the name of that committee against UK?
It is the, it's through the U.S. Election Assistance Commission, and it is a newly formed local leadership council.
Sounds like a lot of big words.
Yep, yep. And it's basically a lot of election officials are going to get together and compare notes on what works and what doesn't.
From state to state.
From state to state, yes.
Which is election, that's Cindy's fault.
That's a responsibility we do take very seriously. We.
We appreciate that.
We have been very successful in our election results and keeping track of things and no major hiccups or anything.
Very efficiently handled.
Yes, so.
Nothing to go to court over.
Exactly.
Amen. Good job.
Yeah. All right, that's all I've got.
All right. Um, then we will move on to the director equalization with Shawna.
Hey, Sean.
Good morning.
Good morning, Shawna.
Okay, so November first is our big cutoff deadline for, you know, where assessments are, where sales are, applications for tax exams and wetlands and, and buffer strips and all those things need to be into our office by November one. So now, basically for the next few months until assessment notices get out, we're working on building permits and picking up any new construction, remodels, things like that. They are up this year, which is nice to, we're going to be pretty busy. The appraisers are done with all the field work out in the county for the reappraisal. Now I am starting to go through and do the ratio studies, look at where our assessments are at, and put values on the reappraisal as well as going through all of the sales and getting my intentions ready for the upcoming assessment year to send to the state. We are very low. We're not the only county out there that's low. The state requires our median assessment ratio to be at eighty five to a hundred percent. We are sitting in the seventies, which I've never seen it quite that low before. The sales are still coming in, sales are really up this year, so we have a lot of. Sales, I can back up our numbers. It just isn't going to be fun putting those on there. So, yeah, we will try and do the least amount to make us qualify for, make sure we're in line with state, but sometimes if we do least now, then next year will be lower, too. So I'm trying to find some even ground. Kind of go from there.
Sounds good.
It's good.
Do you have any questions?
Yeah. All right.
Okay, then we will move on then to the welfare director report. With Sarah. Good morning, Sarah.
Good morning.
Here is my report. It's a shorter this month, hopefully.
So again, the chart, thank you again to Lee for helping me with that. There were some glitches. So, you know, again, the, as far as our services report. I, I, we're, I'm not one hundred percent satisfied with how we're tracking data. I've, I've shared that before. I just feel like we're not getting every phone call that comes in. We might see a client ten times, but we're recording it as one contact. And so those kinds of things aren't necessarily being recorded. But this, this reflects the number of people that we've had basically in our office providing services to.
Because they may come in, but they may need several. But yeah, how do you, because you kind of don't want to double up on some of that either.
Right, right, and it would be.
So the calls and visits per month, the, the second chart down, that one's not quite capturing everything. Yeah, it's, it's a pain, I mean, to, to write all that stuff down, you know.
Yeah.
And when you're just a couple of people, yeah.
Right, so we, we capture it by, like, we've seen this client, and these are the programs this client is receiving our services, but it's not actually the number of times you've seen them. So with that, otherwise. Not, not a lot has changed on that. I, I don't, I don't know. Any questions on that piece of it? Yeah, we're, we're staying busy and just like last month, just because the numbers aren't really high doesn't mean that they're not intense. I think that's one of the things we're seeing, just yes, or Monday, I, I don't even know what today is, but I think it was yesterday. Um, I think that's one of the things we're seeing. Just yes, or Monday, I, I don't even know what today is, but I, I think it was yesterday or Friday, I have like five phone calls that were from ICAP and Salvation Army and they're the homeless ones and the more intense need, um, people. So we're doing what we want to do as far as being a referral source and having um, those clients refer to us, knowing that those are higher need clients and that we're, they're going to be more involved with that too. So.
Because evidently they didn't qualify for theirs. County is the last resort. Um, how was our room? Is that staying busy, obviously?
The apartment. It is. Yeah, we have had somebody in there pretty much most of the time. We have somebody in there right now. And actually on Friday, we had another family come in. Um, it was a disabled mother and so she wasn't, she's not able, I was going to have a person that's in there move out so that they could stay, but she's disabled. Our apartment's not handicap accessible. So we had to house her in another location. So that will be on next month's.
Just a question. So on, if you're looking at the, the charts where you see a lot of like the housing utilities, homeless stuff, you know, housing related things. And then over on the, the clients by program, the couple chart, you see the thirty-four cares. Is that kind of that, that potential to using the cares program, is that kind of a reflection of those three types of services that deal with housing pretty much for?
Yeah, so cares is the one where we would give just the financial assistance. We would approve the financial assistance. The ones with the county are going to be more of the intensive.
Right. So like, like the, the apartment, some of that, but it's all housing related stuff. But cares is pretty much just for housing assistance.
Housing and utilities.
Yeah. So stuff related to where you live. Okay.
Yeah. Yes.
That's it.
Yeah. Yeah. So um, speaking of cares, it's been a really busy month. There's been a lot of people coming in. Um, and so it, it was about a hundred and twenty hours last month for October towards cares that she spent with that. Um, ICAP, they have hired somebody who should be starting at the end of the month, which will be a huge help for our office because again, those clients have a lot of need. And so um, I've been kind of absorbing that in addition to my other responsibilities at this time. It's working, but it's a lot. Right. So that would be good. Yeah. Um, and then as far as our office itself, the network of care, which is that data, the software system that we'll be getting, I have provided them our information that we need to collect. And so we hope to start that at the end of November, beginning of December to actually start building that software for the office. So that'll be, uh, that'll be wonderful to have that. I know it will better track the actual contacts we have with clients.
We can put it down a different way that it doesn't show repetition, but yet it still takes the time. So.
Yes. Yeah. Um, the Community Health Worker Grant, we're um, after, at ten o'clock today, Brad and Matt and Becky and I are meeting to discuss the details of what we want that to look like and who exactly will want to serve, what population is going to be our target population there and, and how we're going to track that information. And um, as far as counting what reports we need to run from that and everything, how we'll know we're successful with that. And then um, we did look into a program to scan files so that we could get rid of some of those file cabinets. We decided the cost of that was just too high. Um, if they come back with a different um, proposal for that, we might consider it. But at this time, what we actually looked at, we, we reviewed the documentation of what's in state statute as far as what we in our office need to keep. I think we've got a lot of files that we aren't required to keep that are really outdated. We don't, we don't need stuff from two thousand anymore. Um, and so we're just going through and keeping um, if they have a lien, if it's a medical or if it's since twenty fifteen, to kind of give us that seven year grace period with that. So that will hopefully eliminate a lot of those files and we won't have any for scanning software with that. And then I'm also doing the NACO Leadership Course. I'm eight weeks in. It's a lot of really great information on how services are provided. And so that's been, it's been helpful to have that. Um, good to help boost the work that we're doing in the community. Yep. And then as far as the systems of care, we have our interagency meeting next Thursday. Due to this Thursday being a holiday, um, we moved it a week off. Last week, I decided to start keeping the num, or letting you know the number of people that came. So last week to the interagency meeting, thirty-two people attended that. Um, so we're continuing to have good attendance. It's a mix of in-person and on Zoom. Which is an interesting way to run a meeting, but it's working. It works. So I did, I do have a survey out right now to assess how it's meeting the needs and I'll make some adjustments to the meeting based on that survey with that. Resilient Communities has actually been a huge focus for me this last month. We had our stakeholder meeting, which went really, really well. Um, a lot of community leaders and um, just really good attendance. We had about forty people attend that stakeholder meeting to kick off stake, or resident communities. Um, so again, really good attendance. The mayor, Chamber of Commerce, like a, a good diverse group of people with that too. Please, please permit the sheriff, they were, they had good attendance there. And then last Wednesday, we had a training session and around sixty people, we had two different sessions for that. When they attended that, we had sixty people attend that um, between the two sessions. So again, really good turnout at that. And I'm excited for what that will um, educate our community moving forward and what we can do with our resident communities.
That was very interesting training.
Yeah.
Things you just don't really realize, I guess, till you sit through that.
The impact that trauma has on people. We don't, we don't recognize that. So it's, it will be good to get a, a common language in our community.
Yes. At such a young age. I mean, that's when all that happens. So.
Yes. Yeah, definitely. Yep. And affects for lifelong.
Yes. Can you, so can you talk about, just, just give a definition of the resilient communities program, just for folks that are listening?
Sure. So the resilient communities is going, it's um, it's really a designation that we as a community are focused on making sure we have the supports in place to counteract trauma and abuse that children experience. Um, life and lifelong supports for that. And so, and that's the ACES training, which ACES is a, is adverse childhood experiences. And so that really focuses on what effects that has in infancy and childhood and teen years and how that carries through long-term. And so we as a community want to be able to build some supports both for adults who have experienced um, trauma and abusive children. So we can counteract.
Yes.
That fact that it's having on children today. So it's really kind of a lifespan focus of what we can do to counteract the impact of trauma.
Trying to break that circle.
Yeah, we, you know, it's one of those things like sometimes we'll hear like, well, why don't they just go get a job? Why can't they keep a job? Why don't they pay their bills? Why don't they do that? Well, people who have lived a life of trauma handle things differently and that trauma has different impacts. And so those are some of the education pieces that we're trying to help people understand. And, and then figure out what we can do as a community to counteract it. Um, I, so part of that resilient community is, is they've offered, um, they would, they've asked our group to become trainers in the ACES training. And so I had the opportunity this Friday to be, to go to train the trainers in Sioux Falls. There's no cost other than transportation to get down there and that is in the agenda, right?
For what?
The, I, I think I, I, I know I submitted.
I do have one. Yes.
Okay. So I realized.
Is it yours?
I hope so.
It is yours.
Good. Okay. So that's, that's this Friday. Again, no cost other than the gas to get there. So like that. Um, and with that, um, so that'll be good because that will allow us to do that training more across our community, have some more opportunities for that. With the strategic planning, our group met the steering committee, which is kind of the leaders in the agencies across the social, uh, the leaders from the social service agencies across the community. We met, um, made a decision on the, the company we want to go with to provide the strategic planning. And now I am in the process of contacting them. What we've talked about is having a partnership between four different groups to fund that strategic planning. And so once I have the conversations and then get everybody on board, I'll be back to talk about how the county can support that.
Organizations.
So what we're looking at is a partnership between, um, and I have.
If you can say.
Well, I haven't had conversations. So, so maybe I should.
I'm just, I'm just an accounting one.
The county would be one of them. And yeah, and then, and the foundation has also agreed. So it would be the county and the foundation so far. And then I, I'm working on conversations with the other.
Thank you.
Four. Yeah. 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 And I need to get the grant in for the foundation. Yeah. I know. I don't want somebody going like, you're going to do, yeah. Yeah. So we'll have the conversations and then hopefully they'll be on board. And then the other one is a Momentum Family Court. I was asked to be on the facilitating team or the steering committee for that. Um, that was initiated by Judge Means. And that's really to address family court improvements, which are very related to child protection. So I've attended a meeting for that and looking forward to, that puts in all of the resilient communities.
Is that, is that a separate, like a, another kind of a diversionary program where, or is it, is it an actual court process?
Um, I, it's, it's along the lines of child court is my understanding, but more for child protection, more intense court services.
Is Casa involved with that?
Yes. So yeah, so that is where, what we've been up to this last month.
Still a little bit.
No, that was a short report. Any questions on that?
Oh.
All right. All right. We will move, you might as well stay here. The next few items are yours. Um, number ten is action to approve a welfare claim settlement. And I don't know, do you want Becky to come up when we discuss this as well?
Ten. Uh, there's a summary of that. Um, and then I did attach the, the actual letter that we have received. So we haven't had one of these in a long time. And so I started this position. So I guess other attorneys decided to start pursuing medical claims that cut into county. Just to add a little more in the mix of what we're doing.
I don't think we've had one last, well, since I've been on. And, and, well, go ahead.
Well, that, the other counties have a lot. I mean, this is a big discussion in the welfare world that, that Avera has come after a lot of the other counties. And so they all couldn't understand why we haven't had more cases. And I don't know. But I expect more will be coming as well. And so um, Tom Burns is the one that kind of processed this. Becky and I had done the deposition in June with it. Um, or was it May? Um, anyway. In there. So
May eleventh.
This, this one in particular, it's a forty-nine-year-old male. He had three hospitalizations and with no insurance, they were, the dates of the hospitalization were July twenty sixteen, September twenty sixteen, and January twenty seventeen, in which he passed away in that twenty seventeen hospitalization. And so then kind of the timeline for that, they um, then Avera had pursued the application. It was denied on March fifteenth, twenty eighteen due to the determination that he could have afforded, could assurance would have, insurance would have been affordable to him. Um, but he was not buying, paying for insurance at that time. And then they came back in May or June of twenty twenty-one with the deposition and then have since sent some negotiated reimbursement with Tom Burns to, um, initially we we had proposed just during the final hospitalization, which would have been the thirty-six eighty-two, they came back and said that wasn't adequate and um, so negotiated down to the nine thousand six hundred and forty-one dollars that they've been the county to be responsible for. Um, Mr. Burns is satisfied with that amount. I think the other option would be litigation.
Cost more.
So, and just so people, this is referring, refer to a, an indigent person.
Okay.
And the initial claim started at fifteen thousand five hundred ninety-eight dollars and sixty-two cents, correct?
Correct.
Just for the record, can you explain the county's responsibility for indigent persons? So people know what that means.
Yep. It's in state statute that um, the county needs to be the last resort pair for people that don't have insurance. Um, so we have had some other people come in and approach us for assistance. Also in state statute is that the hospitals have to work out a reasonable payment plan. And so that's where the last few applications that since I've started that we've had, have gone back to the hospital and saying, once you work out a reasonable payment plan, then the county would be the last resort. So once the hospitals have done that, then we as a county are obligated by state statute to cover medical expenses.
So in this instance, though, if he was able, you know, to have insurance to the marketplace and he chose not to, we still don't have any recourse on that?
It would be a litigation point as to whether or not there was affordable insurance through the marketplace. So just because we feel he could have done it, they're disputing that. So when we take into account the cost of litigation, the time and the amounts, the range that we're in, you know, we feel that this is a fair compromise for the county. Right?
So that's, and that's sort of condition. So we, so we uh, we made him an offer of thirty-six eighty-two and change.
And they rejected that.
And they rejected that. And the bill was fifteen thousand some odd dollars. And they came back and said, we'll settle for ninety-six hundred dollars. Well, I have my own thoughts on a different figure. But you said it would have to go to litigation at this point.
That's where they're at at this point is that they would not accept anything else. And Mr. Burns has been working primarily on this. So.
Okay.
Well, I would make a motion that we settle on this with this amount, nine thousand six hundred and forty-one dollars. Just to keep our costs from being any higher than what.
Litigation cost gets expensive then.
I hate to set the precedent of just saying, okay, you know, but you know, in lieu of uh, future litigation costs and everything else, I think.
I do have a question.
I, I sit on a, on a relief fund on that board. I've never seen this one.
It has, it didn't go through that.
So we're not, uh, you know, all the other counties lean on that fund to help offset.
This one doesn't qualify.
This one does not want.
It's not, it's not big enough. It's got to be what, twenty or twenty-five thousand?
Yeah.
Yeah. So this does not qualify for that.
Million dollar ones, but.
Yes, we are fortunate in the, yeah.
I thought, that's why I was questioning it because I, you know, I usually am one of those that sign off on that baby and I've never seen this one before.
Yeah.
It, it, which is, and I've never had anyone in the twelve years now that have been on that board. I've never had one, kind of in county, never. And, and I thought, well, here we go. But
Yeah.
Not big enough, huh?
Right.
Should have stayed another week. So, so this, this figure, this ninety-six forty-one is something that was worked out with Mr. Burns and Rod.
Mr. Nelson. Yep.
And the two of them have kind of come to disagreement.
Correct.
Okay.
So is Mr. Nelson retained by Avera?
Yes.
Is that how that works? Okay.
For years.
To represent Avera? Okay. Oh, I made the motion. I would stick with my motion.
Do we have any other conversation?
What, uh, okay, what, what part of the budget does this come out of? Cindy, where does, where does that money come from?
Gets there, it's out of mine.
Gets there's budget. She budgets for medical every year.
And it's, and I'm.
And fortunately, our welfare directors have done a very good job keeping our, our claims low for, for medical. They do a very good job. So.
And for the record, this is also the lowest rate. They look at, um, so the, the hospital has their charge that they would charge across the board. Then when they submit it, we come back and there's two options. It's a Medicare rate or a DRG, which is a voucher rate through the state. And these are the lowest amounts of those. So this isn't what they bill initially. This is the lowest, the county pays the lowest amount.
I'll do what we can.
All right. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks Becky. Also then item number eleven is action to approve a contract ICAP for ongoing case management. And I don't know if there's anything you want to add to it. Basically.
Thank you Becky.
Yeah, thanks Becky.
Um, it's basically the same as last year. We just reduced the hours from nineteen to fifteen because that's what they were actually billing us for.
I'll make a motion to approve this, to, yeah, approve the contract.
Have a motion. Got a second? Any other questions or comments? I'm not hearing any. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sarah. All right. Item number twelve, action to approve the auditor's account of treasure and note monthly registered deeds fees.
Uh, the monthly registered deeds fees for the month of October were sixty-one thousand one hundred and eighty-three dollars and sixty cents. And then you have the report of the cash and cash items on hand. Um, as of the last business day in October, we actually counted one point two million dollars in cash and credit card sales and checks in the treasurer's office. It shows you our cash balances in our checking accounts. And on the second page, it also shows you our cash balances by fund. There's eleven million dollar, eleven point two million dollars there that does not belong to the county that gets paid out to the towns, township. There's eleven million dollar, eleven point two million dollars there that does not belong to the county that gets paid out to the towns, townships and so forth.
Move to approve.
Motion by Van Duzen, second by Waterman. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? That motion carries. All right, item number thirteen, action to accept a letter of resignation from emergency management director Jamie Torstensen. Do you want to come up here? Is there anything you want to say? He submitted a letter to us on. I'm sorry to see this happen. Jamie's done an excellent job and very diligent with his work and. But life happens, so.
Good morning.
Good morning, Jamie.
Um honestly and wholly, this is um a tough decision for me to make. It really was. I'm humbled and honored that you folks gave me the opportunity to try this. Believe me, it's a it's a it's a deep boot job. It wears very many hats. I'm a firm believer in enjoying what you do. And today's. Honestly, a little bit of today's society and civility is kind of changing for me. I love being a responder. And I hope to continue that. I have. No intentions of leaving the search and rescue team, but that's a decision that I have to discuss with them as well. And hopefully they accept that with me and will continue that mission. That's where I'm at. Um you know, I just I'm. Honestly, just humbled that I got to. It's been a great experience. It really has. I just don't have it in me to to continue the kind of the politics of this world. And that's just it's just just being open and honest with the folks.
We appreciate that. We appreciate everything you've done, Jamie. You've done a fantastic job for our county. You've developed a reputation in the state as being a leader and somebody that's uh. That is trustworthy and does a good job. And we appreciate what you've done for our county. It means a lot to us. We wish you the best of luck.
Um if I could continue that uh that side of it, I will be here through every step of the transition of whoever you appoint. Just like what was given to me. And a lot of things can be resolved on the phone, even though I'm moving on to back to that private sector. I think there's. There's a lot of probabilities that we can make that transition easy. And honestly, if I need to be an on-call E M for my person. I would love to continue that mission now that I know the game, so. That's what I got. And that's kind of where I'm at.
Well, congratulations on your new endeavors and and we know that you'll be successful. I I recall. When we were in discussion, when we were interviewing for for the job and you got the job. I I I know I made the comment to the the group there. I said. Jamie's the kind of guy that we like to hire because everybody else will want to hire him as well. And he won't probably be along around a long time. And that's the kind of people that we like to hire, those that are sought after by everyone else. So congratulations and and you'll do fine.
And like I said, I I appreciate everyone and respect you guys for what you do because there's there's tough decisions that need to be made. That's just the way the workflow goes, so.
Yeah, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, Jamie.
Thanks, Jamie.
You bet.
Yes.
We need to accept this letter of resignation.
Yes, we do.
Regrettably, make that motion to accept that. And I would regrettedly.
Second.
Second that.
All right, we have a regretful motion in a second. Any other comments or questions?
We wish you well.
Yes, absolutely. We appreciate everything.
Wish you all well. So I'll be around. I won't be a stranger, believe me.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I was gonna say no, but I didn't want to.
All right, so then item number fourteen, action to advertise the position of emergency management director.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Van Duzen. Uh any comments, questions on that? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Item number fifteen, um note office closures Thursday, November eleventh, this Thursday, Veterans Day.
Uh we do have two more days to add to that. The state notified us on Monday that the state will be closed on Thanksgiving Day and the day after. And per our policy, we uh we follow what the state does, so.
All right, so we'll add those two.
Add those to it, yeah. You don't need to take any action, just.
Know them.
Just an FYI for everybody.
So what's the date if I can put it my notes?
Um, okay, so November eleventh, twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth.
Yep.
All right. Um item number sixteen, action to approve claims for payment. And we had a list of those.
Uh total claims for the county. Were just over two point two million. The pass-through money that goes to the state of South Dakota was just over five hundred and two thousand dollars. The reason the county's claims are. So high is because of the ongoing road restoration that we are doing on the hall roads. That bill alone was one point eight million dollars, which we have received funding for. And will offset in the highway budget. Other than that, we are paying our annual payment to. South Dakota, South Dakota municipal league for our employee workers comp compensation. And that bill is down eight percent from last year. Last year, we paid ninety-three thousand dollars. This year, we paid eight-six. And that is a benefit of being in that pool. We we get discounts for participation in. Risk management and other items, safety measures that we take. You'll also notice there that is included in the election budget because I am required to carry workers' comp on my election workers for next year. And for the election workers, it's just about one hundred dollars. Um. You can also see that we had a bill there for forty-five thousand dollars for the courthouse parking lot repaving from Dunick. We got a couple of warning plumbing, did some work over at the detention center on the shower stalls and dorm bathrooms. In. The past month and also in the county park budget, we are paying half of our bituminous paving bill. For doing, I believe they chip sealed the roads out at the park and this is half of the bill, just over uh twenty-seven thousand dollars. We pay the second half. Next year. And like I said before, we paid another one point eight million to Dunick for the hall road restoration project.
That pretty well coming to an end.
Well, they they provided us with eleven million dollars.
And how much have we spent?
And we have not spent.
Well, then I guess we're not done.
No, I guess. Not sure.
They're working on the gravel roads right now. I believe all the paved roads are done, but they're working on the gravel.
Think we've paid maybe around six million dollars to Dunick, so.
Couple ago. Jury duty. That's amazing. Is that forty-five, what, sixty-one eighty-nine? But there's a page and a half of jury duty people.
Catching up on jury trials, definitely. Yes. And everyone who is called in gets paid. What is it?
Are they trained?
Ten dollars in mileage for coming in if you don't get selected. And then I believe it's fifty dollars a day for serving on jury. So we've had a number of jury trials, a number of number of grand jury. Selection or grand jury work also.
Right. We have a motion to accept. All right, we have a motion by Gable. Second by Waterman. Any other questions or comments about the claims?
I do have a question for Cindy. Cindy, um just because I don't want to conflict, I see for E nine-one-one for SDN communications. If if I vote to to approve this motion, was that just a phone line?
That's our internet.
Okay.
That's our internet. Yeah.
There's no conflict with the center. Okay.
Is it in the?
Because for transparency, I wanted to make sure that that was correct, so.
Let me find that. I'm sure that's what it is. Our it's our monthly internet.
Okay.
Bill because we have um. What is it? Fiber optic. So yeah, I I don't think that's a conflict for you on this one.
Okay.
All right. Any other comments, questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Thank you.
Item number seventeen, action to approve automatic budget supplements.
We have two of those. The first one is for the state's attorney's budget in the amount of twenty-one thousand two hundred and eighty-two dollars and twenty-four cents. We're going to supplement that budget so we can make that payment to the Boys and Girls Club. Second one is to the Highway Department. Budget in the amount of one million eight hundred and eighty, eight hundred and thirty-six thousand three hundred and ten dollars and sixty-six cents. Uh we'll supplement that with the money with the funds we received from the uh wind energy people and to keep that at a zero. Cost to the county.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Gable, second by Van Duzen. Any other questions or comments about those? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That motion carries. Item number eighteen, action to approve personnel changes.
Uh we have one part-time correctional officer who has um worked enough hours to advance to the next rate. And this is recommended by the chief correctional officer. Brittany Schlesman has worked two thousand eighty-eight hours, which qualifies her to move to the next step. In that grade.
Move to approve.
Motion by Johnson, second by Waterman. Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries also. Um item number nineteen, action to approve travel requests.
And this was for the uh welfare director to attend the ACEs and resili- resiliency training, train the trainer, training.
Yeah.
So it's a one-day event.
So she's just anticipating mileage or whatever.
Yeah.
Meals.
Meals and meals and mileage.
Move to approve.
By Johnson, second by Gable. Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That motion carries. All right, item number twenty, public notices. Possible coronation commissioners could be attendance uh this Wednesday, Sioux Valley Commissioner's Association meeting in Brookings. And also the farm business banquet on November eighteenth. Does anyone have anything else?
Veterans program at this at the high school.
Yeah, reminder that Brenda Lee and Myron have registered for that meeting tomorrow and starts at twelve noon. At the Brookings County Outdoor Adventure Center, which I think is where we went the last.
We were there.
With a muddy parking lot, remember that?
Yes, it was.
Yeah.
All right, so with that, do we have any old business? Hearing any? How about new business? Do we have any new? How about items for the open?
They got your snowshoes.
No.
Charlie.
Do that. Um, do you have anything for the open for us? Did you want to? Okay. Anyone else have anything?
Oh.
All right, um item number twenty-four, executive session. Do we have a need? Hearing it. All right, I look for a motion to adjourn. Motion by Johnson.
Second.
Second by Gable. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are just, you don't want to leave.
I don't know where this came from.
That was just that was a part of the.
It's attached to.
That's the same one.
Sign in the right spot here.